Since the COVID-19 screening, the COVID-19 screening only applies to us that are here physically present. And we are required to do this before each and every meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and do that while we get the Zoom people connected. Has anyone here had a fever of 100.4 Fahrenheit or higher within the last 14 days?
No.
No. Has anyone had a cough or shortness of breath?
No.
Has anyone had pneumonia, flu, or similar symptoms?
No.
Has anyone traveled out of Arkansas in the last 14 days?
No.
Had guests in the village from other states where sheltering in place orders have been recommended or required?
No.
Had contact with anyone who has lab-confirmed novel coronavirus or is currently testing?
No.
Okay, we do pass the COVID-19 protocol screening for those that are in attendance. How do we stand on our Zoom attendees?
Nancy's not here.
I can't remember my name without looking at my driveway.
We did have the people up there when you turned...
But I mean, the ring.
When you turned you off, the people went away.
But did we have the ring?
It said Ponce.
It just said Ponce. We never had us up there.
There you are.
Do we have... Yeah, they start video as needed.
That's... It's up here.
How long is Larry's video?
Three minutes.
Three minutes maybe? Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to watch it yet.
It's excellent. Larry did a video for the Rotary Club sometime, and he's got music to it, and it's everybody having fun in the village.
Cool.
Kick off your shoes and come on in.
Okay, I have everybody now in the meeting. I am...
Oh, wait just a second. Kirk's still connecting by audio.
Okay.
I'm sorry. See that it's still connecting.
We have a quorum.
Yeah.
We're waiting for Kirk to get connected by audio.
Still connecting.
See that? I can barely see that. That's like looking at the little E on the I chart. Kirk, can you hear us?
Asking again.
Kirk, can you hear us?
Oh, he's still connecting again to the audio.
Raise your hand if you can hear us.
He can't. There he goes. There he goes.
The Hot Springs...
Kirk, can you hear us?
Yes.
Nancy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. The Hot Springs Village Property Owners Association Special Meeting, April 20th, 2020, 2:00 p.m., Chair Diana Potabots presiding. This meeting has been called for the following four purposes: To discuss committees and related matters; To review and possibly revise the job descriptions of our new officers; To discuss the necessity of the retreat, as we will now be meeting in two discussion sessions each month, plus our regularly scheduled board meeting; To direct the treasurer to prepare, with the help of the Finance Committee, a restated budget covering the period of July 1 through December 31, 2020. Your detailed agenda packet supports the activities surrounding these three broad purposes, plus the retreat. The retreat is included in the section titled Officers' Job Descriptions and Related Matters. Due to the pandemic and current economic crisis, it is imperative that we act as quickly as possible. If anything cannot be dealt with today due to time or other constraints, we will move that to new business and begin discussions at our first board discussion meeting, to be held on May 6, 2020, at 2:00 p.m., Place and conditions to be determined by COVID-19 protocol. To help in this regard during our lunch break after our executive session today, I have moved Items 6, 9, and 15 to May. In addition, I have moved Items 20 and 21 to the next called Executive Session. Since this is the first public meeting following today's executive session, I need to announce that we voted to approve the following motion: To approve the engagement of the Rose Law Firm as counsel to the Hot Springs Village Board of Director for the purpose of providing the board with the resources, advice, and opinions for any and all matters requiring legal counsel that come before the Board of Directors of Hot Springs Village Property Owners Association. The vote was conducted by roll call. Voting yes were Directors Dinger, Garrison, Amahandro, Sherman, and Potabots. Voting no were Directors Campania and Loring. At this time, I would like to read a prayer that was written by Villager Marty Mather. Marty initially wrote this prayer for presentation at our April 15... our last public board meeting, April 15, 2020. But due to people leaving the board, they desired to give the prayers, so it was held for our next public meeting, which is today. Please bow your heads if you're so inclined. O heavenly Father, may we climb up onto your lap and feel your arms encircle us. May we be reminded of your greatness, your peace that sustains us, and your love that is unconditional. You chuckle at us when we think we are the ones in control. You are beside us, waiting when we are fearful because of this pandemic. You will wait for us to seek you because you have given us free will. Bring to our ears our sins that we can confess them. Label them for what they are, sins which separate us from you. For in your holiness, you cannot accept sin, our pride, our idols. Thank you for placing all of us in this village, a small taste of the paradise you have awaiting those whose names are written in the Lamb's Book of Life. Now, we thank you for these new board members, this whole new board. May it be a clean and fresh slate. May they do your bidding, accepting the fact that you want only what's best for this village. Please lock your arms and hearts with a desire to march forward following you. Give them discerning spirits and clear-headed thinking as they incline their ears to your guidance. Envelop them in your Teflon so caustic hurtful barbs aimed at these will not wound their spirits. May they become your vessels for the betterment of all aspects of this village. And lastly, may we be reminded that we are all stewards of your gifts to us. None of this is ours, but rather a gift from you, for which we graciously thank you. Amen. At this time, I would like for those that are present to stand and face the flag, and Kirk Dinger would like to lead us in the pledge remotely. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will begin with the orange portion of your packet, Committees and Related Matters. And the first item is Governance Committee. Mr. Sherman. I can't hear you. Yes, Nancy?
Oh, I move to adjourn this meeting. Receiving a packet of this volume at 12:30 for a meeting at 2:00 is impossible to research and make intelligent decisions. There is not enough time, and I'm requesting more time, and we delay this meeting.
So, was that a...
Are you making a motion?
Are you making a motion? I said I make a motion. That's what I thought, but we couldn't hear the very beginning of your statement. I'm sorry, Nancy.
Okay. So, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting to a later time, so that there is a proper amount of time to research all of this information.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn this meeting to a later time, so that there is enough time to study the packet. And that has been seconded. Is there any discussion? I would like to ask the board members present as to whether or not they feel capable of handling this amount of information received at the same time as Director Loring.
I'm okay.
I do.
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Then I'll call for a vote.
I'd like a roll call vote.
We're having a roll call vote.
The last room is not on, so I'll be back.
Okay? Director Campania.
No. I mean, yes to her motion.
The motion is... If you want to repeat it? The motion is to adjourn this meeting immediately and to reschedule at a later time to allow for time to study the documents. Is that correct, Ms. Loring?
It is.
Thank you. Director Dinger. Kirk? We can't click him yet.
I'm here. I do not vote to dismiss this meeting.
Understood. Mr. Garrison?
I'd no to dismiss the meeting.
Director Loring? Yes? Director Amahandro?
No.
Director Sherman?
No.
Madam Chair? No.
Point of question? Now, who besides Nancy and... I'm sorry. Who on this board, present in this room, saw this document in detail and all the amendments and things in it, or motions in it prior to 12:10 today?
Myself.
So, the two of you are now aboard within the board? So, that's my...
No.
No?
No.
Oh.
I called the special meeting as the chair, and since Wednesday, I worked diligently on this. And the packet when received to me today, I worked with my secretary in the preparation of these documents, along with in conjunction with my vice chair. And these are all documents that have been available. I mean, they are in conjunction with all of our governing documents. They're all related to all of our governing documents. And as such, to be a member of this board, you should have been familiar with the subject matters introduced herein.
That's not the question, Madam Chair. I am familiar with our governing documents. What I'm not familiar with is all the red line versions and all the changes you want to make to different documents, whether it's committees and so forth. Some of these I could very easily support. Others I probably would need more... need to understand better before I could. And for me to have to make a decision today regarding documents I've never read, much the same as you said before and prior to this, to review the red line documents in other situations in the last year, I'm asking for the same thing. Furthermore, I think...
Yes, and that was handled in a motion, and that failed.
No. I think our bylaws state that we need three days' notice for a meeting and for the packet. And you don't think so, Lloyd?
No, it says three days' notice. It says nothing about receiving the packet three days in advance.
So, I mean, are you kidding?
Actually, the notice does... The notice requirement is the agenda, which this was not on there, but...
By attending the meeting, your notice is waived.
That is correct.
If you so choose to object to the notification period, the participants...
It would appear to me that the notice was given in appropriate three-day timeframe.
Yes.
What not was... What was not included is what the purpose of that meeting was.
That was...
Particularly, this detailed agenda is in no way in relationship, and much more extensive than the notice that was given.
Probably four items were on the notice.
And these items all relate to those four items?
Well, so be it, if that's what you think. I think you're violating our bylaws, but that's your choice to do that. You're the chair. And so is the choice of the rest of the board. I'm not... As I said, I might like some of these things. But if I can't understand them and have time to read them through, I'm gonna have a problem with it. But that's your decision.
Let's go forward, and you can express that in discussion for each of these items.
Exactly.
Item one, Vice Chair.
I move to rescind, repeal, and annul the Governance Committee originally adopted on August 16, 2017.
One second.
I second the motion.
Background. Based on this action, the Governance Committee, its charter, and any reference to it within all HSV governing documents and other POA resources shall be removed, including but not limited to CEO's job description, Items 8 and 11. Bylaws, Article 7, Section 1A, and Sections 5A6. Policies, Chapter 8, Article 7, Section 2, Other Than Protective Covenants, Paragraphs 1 through 3. Website content, marketing materials, and other items, if any, as discovered. Foundation, the Hot Springs Village Board of Directors.
You have to have a second.
We already had a second. We have two seconds.
The Hot Springs Village Board of Directors consists of seven directors elected by the membership, two board elected corporate board officers, and the GM/CEO, a contract-stipulated officer representing operations and management. With a board of this size, all members consider themselves a working board. There is no need for a board within a board. Additionally, the Governance Committee, in its three-plus years of existence, has many times referred to itself as the conscience of the board. This is not only insulting to the balance of its directors, but to the Hot Springs Village Property Owners Association that elected them. All directors' opinions, ideas, and experiences are equally meaningful and relevant. It is essential to achieve a full team effort, for that is the only way to create a synergistically dynamic governing board.
Briefer discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Sure.
The chair recognizes Director Tormi and asks him to speak a little more carefully into his mic. I know it's difficult, but I don't think the video picks it up.
You're probably correct. First off, I would agree with the statement that it would be insulting to the board to have a statement that this committee, the Governance Committee, was conscience of the board. I know of no time in my time on the Governance Committee, and why it was least chaired by Cindy, that any statement as that was made. So, just to clear things up, Lloyd, where have you heard this... the conscience of the board?
Just information that's been relayed to me along the line.
But by who, I'd like to know?
I can't say that specifically.
So, in other words, you're not sure who told you that?
Is that relevant?
It might be, because then your background is not necessarily accurate. If it's just based on hearsay...
Then you can consider it hearsay.
Okay. Got it.
I would like to say that as a continuing board member, I experienced a great deal of angst in trying to get things done following the protocol that was dictated by the Governance Committee. And in fact, as a member of the Lakes Committee, our charter was submitted for review for a very, very minor change, which involved the dates of the officers. That was submitted for review in February. I received notification that it had been submitted, and that it had been approved, and that it would be voted on in the March board meeting. It was not voted on in the March board meeting, and it was not voted on in the April board meeting. I believe that it behooves this association for recognizing the fact that for 40-plus years, all governing documents were handled by the full board, and I believe that we need to adopt that policy again.
In response to your comment, the one change I think you asked for was to moving it from April to June, the date. That was basically almost done in a blanket approval when we moved it from April to June. So, the truth is, it had been done. But whether the Governance Committee is not what blocked that motion that you thought it needed to be made from being a... The Governance Committee doesn't set the agenda for the board meetings. Does it?
I asked for it to be part of the consent agenda in last month's meeting, and it didn't become.
But did you believe that the Governance Committee set the agenda?
No, I did not believe that the Governance Committee set the agenda. But I did believe that there were hoops that had to be gone through in order for things to get onto the agenda, because an approval of the Governance Committee was one of them. To give you another example, in last... During last summer, I went to the same committee and asked them to review a policy regarding election, Board of Director election integrity procedures. And I was not able to get anywhere with that policy change either. I believe that this committee has been blocking the efforts of other members of the board who do not serve on the committee.
Well, I'll take a huge exception to your last example. Because of your request, we actually formed a subcommittee and rewrote all that to put some integrity to it. So, you got exactly what you wanted, I believe. You voted in favor of both those changes. One was to how we handle Board of Directors elections, and the one was how we handle all other voting requirements that, if I don't remember, if I remember, you voted in favor of.
Would you like to discuss your timeframe? I presented that in the summer. You presented it, and then you started working on it in November. That's not exactly timely.
It is timely enough that it was implemented to the only election vote coming up.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make some...
Okay, Kirk.
The Governance Committee Charter has been in violation of the bylaws from its inception. Hot Springs Village POA's bylaws, Article 7, Section 4, H. A member who is serving on the Board of Directors or whose spouse presently serves on the Board of Directors shall not serve on a standing committee until after completion of service on the Board of Directors. This Governance Committee Charter has been in violation of this longstanding bylaw from August 16, 2017. Changes to this bylaw presented to the Board of Directors by an illegal committee is also illegal. Therefore, the Governance Committee has always been illegal, and is illegal now. This committee is not in the best interest of the association or the will of the property owners.
Kirk, I would like to correct a couple of statements that you made there. This committee did have a problem that was identified in 2019 regarding Board of Director members serving as committee members. The charter was changed, voted on upon the board to recognize them and their ability to be on this board. And subsequently, Article 12 regarding our committees has been changed to name both the board and the staff person associated with each committee are no longer designated as liaisons. They are now designated as members of the committee. So, what you're stating, it happened beforehand, but was corrected in 2019.
You should point out too, I know you supported, additionally, we added property owners.
My point is that it was corrected by a Governance Committee that had an illegal standing. Therefore, they cannot make those changes. However, it doesn't matter.
They didn't make the changes. The board made the changes.
They recommended the changes and presented it to the board.
And the board passed it. The committee itself did not make the changes. The board made the changes. Only the board... Only the board can set policy in the village.
That's true, but they did present it to the board.
That was their... That was their charter.
And the board... The board did pass it.
That would be the... That would be the point of every committee's charter, that when they recognize that they have problems in their charter, to go to the board and present those problems, so that the board can take it up and deal with them.
I have to agree with that.
I'd like to call for a vote. Jen, you would like this to be a roll call vote, and this will be done alphabetically. Okay, would you like to...
Repeat the motion.
I will repeat the motion. The motion is move to rescind, repeal, and annul the Governance Committee originally adopted on August 16, 2017. Director Campania?
No.
Director Dinger?
Yes.
Director Garrison?
Yes.
Director Loring?
No.
Director Amahandro?
Yes.
Director Sherman?
Yes.
Madam Chair? Yes. The ayes have it, five to two. Motion carries. Item two, Director Sherman.
I move to rescind, repeal, and annul the CMP originally adopted on April 18, 2018.
One second.
Based on this action, the CMP, its original eight understandings, and any references to it within all HSV governing documents and other POA resources shall be removed, including but not limited to Policies, Chapter 1, Article 2, Section 1; Chapter 8, Article 4, Section 5F; and Article 6, Section 2, Item 3. All neighborhood references to West Village, East Village, Lazy Po, Sobho, Coronado, The Foothills, The Mountain, Cortez Highlands, and Village Center from the website, active map tables, marketing materials, all social media, not including Nextdoor, which is not affiliated in any way with the HSV POA; POA employee email, all HSV public relations activity, all premium or souvenir products, convention booths and giveaways, golf-related items and clothing, both owned by the POA or Pro Shop tenants; POA-owned food and beverage facilities. All 2020 budget and future dollars earmarked for CMP activity, such as the design of waymaking signage, neighborhood center concepts, et cetera. All activity towards any CMP implementation immediately ceases as of this day, using absolutely no more POA efforts of committees, POA money, and labor hours of any HSV POA staff, including general manager, CEO, or wasting the time and efforts of committee members and volunteers, and any other items, if any, as discovered.
Is that a discussion? Or are you gonna read the rest of it?
Oh.
He's not finished giving his foundation. Thank you.
The core of the Comprehensive Master Plan was based in concept of new urbanism. There are many associations representing the architectural ideas of new urbanism, perhaps none so successfully than the Congress for New Urbanism, which is www.cnu.org, of which our current CEO is a member, as well as 17 employees of the DPC staff that were selected as our CMP consultants. The Congress for New Urbanism, or CNU, states, among other items in their charter, "We stand for the restoration of existing urban centers and towns. We advocate policy and practices restructuring where neighborhoods should be diverse in use and population. Communities should be designed for the pedestrian and transit. We assert the following principles that begin with the region, metropolis, city, and town." Hot Springs Village is neither a city or a town, much less a metropolis. HSV is a 26,000-acre natural wonder. It was developed as a consummate active adult lifestyle gated community, the largest of its kind in America, with more natural and man-made features and amenities than anyone could imagine within its gates. HSV already provides to... HSV already provides diverse housing choices, activity centers, and commuting-oriented building structures with indoor and outdoor pursuits. Meanwhile, commonly referred to as urbanistic, the village is surrounded by various businesses and highways. We are in close proximity to medical resources, uptown culture in historical hot springs, as well as downtown culture in Big City Little Rock, not to mention the huge luxury gaming, entertaining, and lodging opportunity of Oakland. The CMP called for a town/village center supported by a mammoth densely populated multifamily apartment design and the creation of neighborhood names with no relationship to the already incorporated amenities, roads, and infrastructure, or existing families and housing, even our heritage of the conquistador and E. Faye Jones was lost in his wake. In other words, the CMP actually invented congestion as its plan to justify the new urbanism solution.
The chair now recognizes Director Loring.
Thank you. Have you plans to take a membership vote to change the declaration and remove the idea that we are required to have a plan?
No.
I believe the declaration does require that, and I believe upon asking Mr. Cooper if there was a plan, he said no. And I'm sure Leslie can give many more details than I can. So I would think it would behoove us to have a membership vote to change that part of the declaration.
I don't know why we can't have a plan, a new plan. It's not that we don't want a plan, we just don't like this plan.
That's a reasonable alternative, except you can't eliminate a plan while you go off and spend time developing a new plan. A new plan should be developed before this plan is scuttled. And to your point, Lloyd, if you've read the CMP Advisory Committee's report, which I believe you have, it talks about the town center thing that you harped on a lot of here as being so far off the table that we aren't even considering it. Another point I'd like to make is, and it's a question of Leslie, does anywhere in our Pro Shop contract with Rick Ross or Tom Hepper define what he can and can't sell?
It gives him the pathway to sell logoed, to use our logo. I don't know why that was included in here. There's nothing to do with the CMP related to our logos.
So you're asking to, I guess you're asking for something to stop that wasn't in existence. Is that correct?
Just covering all bases.
Okay. So in other words, there's no, we are going to be operating with no plan?
Did we have a plan before the CMP?
Ten years, 2010, if I'm not mistaken, that was not a plan at all. It was just a document that referenced a variety of things, some of which were clearly advantageous.
So we were operating indirectly at that time also, is what you're saying?
Probably.
Okay.
Nancy?
I can only speak to the Trails Committee, but most of the work they've done for the last two years involves updating the CMP and the master plan to incorporate additional trails, to connect trails, existing trails. They've done a great deal of work to determine who actually owns the property, what the trail's going to go across, whether it's common property, personal property, or Cooper Reserve. That has been their entire focus and purpose for probably two years.
And why would that go away?
As I'm sure with other committees, I can really only speak to that and recreation.
And Director Loring, why would that work go away?
Because you've eliminated the master plan.
She's not saying it has now.
I would think that it would be imperative to the Trails Committee to continually be improving their quote "product" unquote regardless of the existence of a plan or not a plan. And I would also like to state that I believe that our declarations, as they were first instituted, did contain a plan from Cooper Communities.
Pardon me, it did what?
It did include a plan from Cooper Communities. I've seen plans all over this place for years.
I specifically asked Cooper's representative for the copy of that plan because, as you know, initially I had significant amount of heartburn over the CMP, and I believed it needed to be revisited. And the answer I got back was there is no plan, and none was ever filed. At one point I said, hey, you got this thing that we're going to develop 25, 26,000 acres. All that stuff was never properly filed or was never filed, so they don't, they won't admit. Their attorney indicates that there's no plan. I'm not opposed to maybe making significant adjustments, and I don't care whether you call it a CMP, a future plan, whatever. I just want a plan before we throw one down the drain. I want a new one. That's, and I can support that, but it's got to be, you can't get out in front of your headlights.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Nancy.
You alluded that the Trails Committee should be doing this, and the Recreation Committee should be doing this. The CMP has given them a very useful tool to do this. If you want to erase every remnant of the Comprehensive Master Plan, which is what this sounds like, and Director Sherman indicated you didn't want to leave any stone unturned, you want that to just disappear from our history, then I'm not sure how you can expect them to then continue on that path.
Just a moment, please. CEO Emily had asked for the floor next. Thank you.
No, I'm in agreement with Director Loring on the confusion, I think, that comes. Yes, there's a whole page here that was read about a town center and new urbanism, and those are all buzzwords that have been used to scare people. But the fact of the matter is, this Comprehensive Master Plan has three legs to it: maintenance, service gaps, and innovation. So what you've in effect said to me, and by the way, my title is not GM/CEO, my title is CEO. But what you've indicated to me is that I was to do no work on anything, that's what your words are, wasting the time and efforts of committee members or volunteers. So employees, committee members, and volunteers are to do no work of anything within the CMP. I think you will significantly confuse the system, and people won't know what to do. And that's very concerning as the person who is in charge of the operation, whose job description talks about this, whose contract obligations talk about me supporting plans, and now I don't know what to support and what resources to put against it. I'm very concerned at the broadness of this message.
So you're saying based on eliminating the CMP, people do not know their job anymore?
I'm saying you've made a very clear statement that there is to be immediately ceasing as of this day, using absolutely no more POA money and labor hours of any HSV POA staff, or wasting the time and efforts of committee members and volunteers. So you would be giving a mandate, and that CMP includes lots of things beyond a town center which, as Mr. Campania noted, has been tabled.
What happened to the way we operated before the CMP? Why did anybody know how to do their job then?
I can't speak to that, sir. I can only speak to what the board has charged me with at this time, and what the board's vote have been at this time.
Were you here at the time before the CMP was voted in?
I was.
Were you the CEO?
I was not, not for some of the time. I came as chief financial officer first. And if you look back, you'll actually see that my two predecessors at least were charged with developing a plan because, as Mr. Campania noted, it had been noted years before that we did not have a general plan development.
So we operated without a plan before, but you're saying we can't do it now?
I'm just telling you it creates confusion.
The chair would like to recognize Director Garrison.
I just want to speak to the angst that's out there over the CMP and to the innovation leg of the CMP. Part of the innovation of the CMP was village homes and land. Village homes and land was a failure. It cost us a lot of money that we don't have now. It set the real estate community against us in the village. The gate issue came out of the CMP.
No, sir.
There's an RFD proposal in the CMP for put the RFD at the gates.
No, sir. That was a task given to Mr. Twigs.
And the marketing plan that the CMP put forward. Spread the marketing dollars out over many different baskets, didn't have a single person controlling the marketing budget, and we lost a couple of years of marketing because of the CMP.
Director Sherman, did you have anything?
Yes, I do. I believe that if you check back through the records, there will have never been a time when there was a master plan for the village other than the original platting. Secondly, when the RFP was issued for the CMP, it had desired outcomes in it. One of the desired outcomes was to place the village as a developer and not a maintenance organization.
No, sir.
It's in the RFP. I can show it to you. It's actually in the CMP.
I would appreciate that.
So the change here, this document of the CMP can be relegated to another community or to another committee that can utilize what's in the document and pull the best out of it and reintroduce it. But we need to return to a maintenance organization, not a development organization.
Madam Chair, may I ask you?
Well, I think Kirk had his hat up for quite a bit. He didn't see it long ago. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Denger.
Okay, I just have a short comment. The CMP has been voted down by property owners. All the declaration changes instituted by the CMP were voted down last year. Now, this year, nine out of 10 POA or property owners voted against the CMP by voting for the new board here, who all said that they were wanting to rescind the CMP. Thank you.
First off, nobody voted.
Leslie is next, thank you. Sorry.
I'd like to correct something that Vice Chair Sherman stated. Actually, within the CMP, there's a very clear statement that says that the Property Owners Association should not take the position of a developer. It's very definitive on that point. So I believe, while I know that there are some in the community who misunderstand what certain parts are, there is a very clear statement in there. And I just wanted to make sure that, and I'd be happy to show you the reference to that, but I wanted to make sure that that comment didn't go unnoticed.
So got it.
I'd like to just make a comment to Kirk. Nobody voted on the CMP. They voted for four new directors. Now, some of their platforms may have had that in it, maybe they all have it. I can't remember them all. But they weren't voting yes or no for the CMP. That was not on the ballot. Secondly, I agree with a lot of the issues that Dick raised regarding the innovation part of it. But, and you brought up a point, it could be re-architected to address the maintenance issues and the other things that you think we should be involved in, which I can't disagree with that. Let's do that first, then get rid of the baby.
May I make one more? Oh, did she have?
Nancy had her hand up first, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm in total agreement. This goes hand in hands with the CMP committee, I'm sorry, the CMPAC committee, because that is kind of what they are doing. They're not tasked with implementing every aspect of the CMP. They're tasked with evaluating it, just as Nikki reported in her annual report, you know, we're going to hang up the bike, mountain bike trail, we're going to hang up this. I mean, it's on the back burner, way on the back burner. They determined from the beginning with...
May I interrupt you for just a second, Ms. Loring?
...271 essential items.
I would like to make a motion to table this motion to receive further property owner input.
I'll second.
I'd like to call for a vote on the motion to table this to receive further property owner input.
Can there be any discussion?
We will begin discussing this at the May discussion session. Table it till May, May 6.
Could I?
Discussion.
One point discussion?
Yes.
I know there's angst around this document, but I implore you to be careful of what message you are sending out of here by telling the world we don't have a plan. And I know you just talked about tabling it, but all of our property values and those that we are sworn to uphold for our property owners are at stake. So I would just implore you to be very careful with this discussion.
I'd now like to call for a vote on my motion to table this discussion until May 6.
You're asking for a roll call or a regular vote?
I'm asking for a regular vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'd like a roll call vote.
Okay.
We're now back to a roll call vote on the table, although it passed by the affirmative of ayes.
Did everybody vote?
There were four votes aye to table it.
How did Nancy vote?
She raised her hand.
Oh, then if it was unanimous, vote forget.
It wasn't unanimous.
Okay. She's saying it's not unanimous.
Then I think I'd like a roll call vote.
Okay.
It wasn't unanimous?
No, it wasn't. Well, we didn't get to finish it. We were interrupted in the interim, so I don't think everybody had the chance to even place their vote yet, Nancy. So we'll recognize Director Campania's request for a roll call vote, and we will vote by roll call alphabetically. Thank you.
And this is to table this for discussion in the May Wednesday Sessions one and two, and to reconsider it on the 20th, is what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Director Campania?
I vote yes to table.
Director Denger?
No.
Director Garrison?
I'd like to qualify my vote. I'd like to vote to table it, but I would like to say that at that time, maybe we re-present this.
Well, that would come out of the table and discussion, yes.
Come out in the discussion, yes, okay. I'd like to table it.
That's a yes. Director Loring?
I would like to table it, but also I'm questioning whether you can actually take a vote at a work session?
We didn't say we were going to take a vote at a work session. We said we would begin the discussions at the work session and bring it up for business at the May 20th board meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. I vote yes to table it.
Director Alejandro?
Yes.
Yes to table?
Yes.
Director Sherman?
Yes to table.
Madam Chair?
Yes to table.
The ayes have it, six to one.
So a question for you. Do you intend to bring this forward as new business so that on the 20th, depending on whatever we do, such that the property owners have 30 days to weigh in, like we have been practicing in the past, or you just want to go to the vote?
That is to be determined.
Okay.
Can we explain the calendar at this time, which I think we'd be?
The calendar of this board is going to be discussion sessions on the first two Wednesdays of every month at 2:00 PM, of which you are not required to attend as a board member. Your attendance is only required at regularly scheduled board meetings.
Did you think I was arguing against that?
No, 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 no. I just, I just thought I needed to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Item 3, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, I believe goes hand in hand with item 2.
Yes, I make a motion to table this in conjunction with the previous item.
My second.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 No?
Was that unanimous?
We didn't hear Kirk.
I didn't hear Kirk. Could you wait a second?
No, I don't.
No.
Okay, so it passes six to one.
Can I ask the Secretary to, when it passes with six and there's only one no vote, that you make sure we record the individual who voted no.
Thank you, Tommy.
We are now at item number 4, Finance Committee.
I move to rescind, repeal, and annul the Finance Committee originally adopted on January 18, 2020.
I'll second.
Based on this action, the Finance Committee, its charter, and any references to it within all governing documents and other POA resources shall be removed, including but not limited to website and other items as discovered. In general, the Finance Committee as presented in its charter is too limited in scope and direction to be effective, given the financial and economic crisis Hot Springs Village finds itself in today.
Point of order, point of order. I believe we needed a second, unless I didn't?
We had a second.
You had a second? Tucker?
Tucker suckled it.
I'm not done with the motion.
Sorry.
No, but it was seconded before you. It has to be seconded before you give the foundation.
So noted. To finish, this committee will be replaced with a broader, multifaceted committee combining financial and strategic planning for our Village.
Discussion.
Discussion.
As you well know, I was supportive and still am of the Finance Committee. I haven't had a chance to read your next motion as to what the makeup is. But it looks to me, glancing at it, that you are taking responsibility for this, all of this work that falls under our CEO, or much of it. And it's her responsibility to do much of the planning around, for example, budgeting, not the board's. It's the board's responsibility for approving the budget. So, I question whether or not that's what you have to tap with your second motion. But maybe you can answer my question for?
The board's responsibility lies in strategic planning. Period. That includes the budget and financial planning.
Planning's one thing. It's not the board's responsibility to manage the finances. It's the board's responsibility to oversee those to make sure at time and time they're being spent properly. But I think it falls under the CEO's responsibility and her staff to manage the finances of this association on a day-to-day basis.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Director Loring?
I have a similar question, because the new committee that would be formed, would it be advisory or would it actually have powers?
It would have no powers. It would report to the board.
Okay, and the board would be decided that it's not of staff at all?
Pardon? Could you repeat that? Because I was rude and I wasn't finished with my comment about the duties and responsibilities. So I think I interrupted and talked over you.
It would be advising the board only and no advising of the staff?
That is correct.
And I also would like to direct you to Article 9, Section 1. The Board of Directors is responsible for governing the affairs of the Property Owners Association by managing the legal and financial matters of a Hot Springs Village.
So is it your interpretation, Lloyd, that that means that this board is going to start managing every financial aspect?
We're not talking about the day-to-day operations, or we're talking about overseeing the financial.
Look, help me understand what that would be. I mean, to me, it seems overseeing the financial is setting a budget, which the board eventually does after it's developed by the staff. And then, from time to time, which we have been getting in the past, where we stand against that budget relative to revenue and expenses. What else would we be doing? What else are you suggesting that they do? I'm just a little confused, but I mean, I may be fine with it. Just tell me what it is.
I think you'll find that in the document that is outlined for the Financial and Strategic Planning Committee.
Well, if I had more time to read it, I might be happy with it.
Madam Chair? Yes. I have a similar concern. Obviously, the board was in agreement this last session about the need to put together a Finance Committee. As you know, that Finance Committee Charter as it stands today, as do our budget policies, as do the duties separating from treasurer, CEO, CFO, all of those things, this action touches staff in several ways. These actions that you have planned. I have significant concerns about, for instance, you, in your current, this next item, you actually have staff requests coming to the board. That would be in violation of my duties.
Where do we have staff requests coming to the board?
On your proposed charter, which is the next agenda item under purpose 2B, staff requests to Finance Committee to be approved by the Board of Directors. That used to read that staff requests of the Finance Committee would be approved by the CEO.
Yeah, that could actually, I could interpret that to say, I'll make it up. Jason decides he needs a new backhoe. And it's a backhoe that costs $10,000. This could read such that this committee recommends it to the board without any involvement of the CEO. That would seem to me to be pretty inappropriate.
That's inappropriate, that I didn't turn off my cellphone.
Well, that may be true, but we'll.
Oh, it's $25, fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Or pizza.
I would like to, at this time, ask our treasurer to direct some comments to the board. Mr. Dan Alward?
I think the, unfortunately, I think.
Pull my culture.
Yeah, we can.
Unfortunately, I think what's being described here is like taking everything to the nth degree and trying to trip it by reference. What we're doing here is we have a committee that is not reporting to the Board of Directors. It's really reporting to staff. And the board is saying that they would like the committee to report to them. And if you read the written charter for that committee, it isn't a very functional committee as far as providing the kind of control and accountability that the board is supposed to exert over the finances of the Village. The, as far as the question about staff requests, the staff requests have to come through you so to the board, because you are their only employee.
That's not what it says, though.
It doesn't say there's any other employee. It says you are the only employee, so you have to provide that request to the board. And if you don't do that, then it's not a valid request. But the board, because this is a board committee, controls what the demands and requirements are of that committee. As far as duties and responsibilities, it is appropriate that a committee of this level does make recommendations to the board. Those recommendations are not necessarily agreed to by the staff, because part of a Finance Committee should be a check and balance with the staff. There shouldn't be a committee that is, a Finance Committee that is not providing that service to the board. As far as the planning portion, is part of the analysis of the budget and making recommendations to the board on the budget. And looking five years, maybe 10 years out, as far as where the financial demands are going to be, they have to do analysis of budgets and our current financial condition. They also need to do forecasts of where the Village is going to be, three years, five years, 10 years down the road. We don't have a good mechanism of doing that right now. And that's one of the weaknesses that I think the POA suffers at the moment, is that we don't have a way that the POA board is provided the data and the information that they should have to have that oversight of the staff. So that's what this is all about.
What in the current charter would preclude what you just talked about for the last 30 seconds from having?
Because it is an advisory committee to the staff.
That's not correct. That's incorrect.
They actually report to the board, if I'm not mistaken, the Finance Committee, not to the staff.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of the charter with you?
I.
I'm trying to figure out how to get it off. I have a problem.
I think this is the current charter. I'll make sure it's the current charter. Yep, that's the current one.
It has, it has a line in it. There is a line that it says it does not.
What's the, up at the top, though, it say authority, generally right there, it say we're in reports.
Read the purpose statement at the beginning. I think you'll read the purpose statement at the beginning. It tells you what their purpose is.
Trying to read this very quickly, but there was a qualifier in here that they were not to serve it as any kind of a review or analysis of the performance of the staff.
Well, the Finance Committee is not the reviewer of performance of the staff.
No, they're to review the finances of.
No, it doesn't say that. Madam Chair, I could clarify a couple of things?
Yes.
Under authority and accountability, so Section 1B, this committee is accountable to the HSB POA Board of Directors. Period. There is a statement in here, staff requests to the Finance Committee should be approved by the CEO. There is another statement, board requests regarding operational matters must first be requested of the CEO by a majority of the board. The reason for that is to not get confused about who was responsible for what, so that if, just like I mentioned to you, Madam Chair, by calling this meeting today and asking for the treasurer to establish a budget, there are some issues around job duties that have been impacted by that particular item. That statement was made before any request came to me as the person, according to my job description, as the person responsible for the budget. The CFO's job description also puts her, and actually, one of the policies puts the CFO in charge of budget amendments. Additionally, under the duties of the treasurer, so I'm looking at Chapter 8, Article 4, which describes the duties of the officers, says that the treasurer should possess professional experience using generally accepted accounting principles and accrual accounting. And I would ask for our new treasurer to state where his experience is in that manner.
I'm not a CPA, nor do I ever claim to be one, but I work in the business world and we deal.
It's not what it says. It says experience using generally accepted accounting principles and accrual accounting.
Do you mind if I finish?
Go right ahead. That's my question, though.
Because I do work in the business world and deal with financial reporting all the time. And I work with our corporate people and ensure that we do have all of our things properly recorded. So I'm not sure what your issue is.
I can state it.
But I fully understand whatever parts.
If I may state, a treasurer's position is not that of a bookkeeper or a basic accountant.
That's not what it says. It says professional experience using generally accepted accounting principles and accrual accounting, which our CFO did possess. So I'm just asking whether or not he had experience using those things.
And you'll see that we're dealing with job descriptions for our officers later on today. Thank you.
I have a comment towards Dan's comment. Every one of us who's had senior business positions knows that when you write documents that have, let's say, a lot of flexibility, what can happen will happen. So when we have a document that is gray as to whether or not the staff can start coming directly to board with finance requests to spend money, it doesn't specifically state it, but this doesn't stop it.
Well, if.
And only it stops it is the fact that they would report to Leslie, and without her as the gatekeeper of that, you could have potentially every employee coming through, "I need a new laptop."
The Finance Committee has no authority to spend monies? The board only can spend monies?
Well, actually, the board could spend what's been budgeted. And they could change the budget with a vote, but the board can spend what's been budgeted. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, what do you think happens when Mary says, "I need a new flat screen"? I'm going to go to the board at that, because it's hard for me to do my job without it. And I would, the curved one, because I think they're much more user-friendly. I won't want those, by the way, myself.
I don't believe that that is applicable to the situation whatsoever, Director Campagna.
And the board, in their duties, would turn that person right back to the CEO.
Can I mention a point of order in just a moment? We're talking about one motion, and now we're talking about a second motion that has not even been.
Introduced.
Addressed. So can we get back into the Robert Charles of Order of the meeting? What would you like to do with the first motion? I have no problem if you want to discuss them both together, but we need to either, someone needs to remove the motion of the first one, or we need to vote on it, or if you'd like to table it.
I would suggest you move to, Madam Chair, to a vote rather than opening up any more discussion.
Okay, I will call for a vote on Item 4, Finance Committee. Move to rescind, repeal, and annul the Finance Committee originally adopted on January 18, 2020. And I assume that Director Campagna would like to have a roll call vote.
Good assumption.
Okay. Director Campagna?
No.
Director Denger?
Yes.
Director Garrison?
Yes.
Director Loring?
No.
Director Alejandro?
Yes.
Director Sherman?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The ayes have it, five to two. Item 5?
Item 5, Vice Chair.
I move to approve and adopt the Finance and Planning Committee and Charter as presented on this day of April 20, 2020.
I'd like to make a motion.
We already have a motion on the table.
Are you seconding it?
You can make one before I second it, can't you?
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion and we just moved to vote on this. We discussed it till we're brain-dead on the subject, so let's just vote on it and get done with it. So let's just vote on it and get done with it.
Well, first, I need a second on the motion.
I'll second.
You'd like to...
Nancy is holding her hand.
Nancy?
Nancy?
Am I allowed to make another motion?
Well, I think you have to do one at a time.
Yeah, you can actually. Make as many as...
I would move to table this until I actually can study it.
I second that one.
Are you removing your...
Are you removing your motion?
Yes, I'll move my motion.
Okay, so now we have the motion to adopt, approve, and adopt the Finance Committee, Planning Committee, and Charter that has been seconded. And that is superseded by a motion to table this motion until, what was your until, Nancy?
Until she can stop.
So I have an opportunity to read it and understand it. And if you'd like to put that to May 6, that's fine too. I don't, put a date on it, I don't care.
I would like to open that motion up to discussion, the motion to table. And I would like to say that...
Did it second on?
Oh, we had a second. Director Campania has seconded. I'm sorry.
When he removed his other one?
When he removed his other one, he seconded this one. I would like to say that we currently have people applying for this Finance Committee, that applied for the other Finance Committee. We know we took off a really late start on the other Finance Committee from all last year. We have a pandemic going on. And I believe that it's imperative that we get this Finance Committee Charter approved and get this committee working and in place as soon as possible.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes. That was my discussion towards your motion.
Do you think that some of these people might have applied for this Finance Committee based on the current charter? And they may not want to be on the Finance Committee with a new charter?
That's always a possibility, but may not be true. I would now like to know if there's any other discussion on this tabling matter? I'm calling for discussion on the motion to table.
Yeah. I would just say that I noted that the CFO has been removed from this charter. The CFO's interactions, I think that would be the very first time in the history of any Finance Committee that there is no CFO involvement.
And I think you're saying, Leslie, I've not put words in your mouth. That's any Finance Committee in any company of any size, not just the P O A.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. Your person in charge of, and by the way, who has the accounting degree and the experience and the understanding of our finances, is typically always involved in somehow, and that was removed from this charter. I think that presents a problem, especially in light of the fact that we have a female CFO who did have the requisite experience required in our policy and is being replaced.
So noted. Treasurer, onward, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would assume that the staff liaison from the staff would be the CFO. But I guess that's a decision the C E O has to make.
This doesn't call for a staff liaison, and we did away with liaisons.
Dan, while you talk, you need to get closer to this. Poor lover.
Staff member. Every committee requires, under your new regime, the board non-voting member and the staff non-voting member for every committee.
That's required by bylaw, Article 12.
So that wouldn't be...
And it says unless the charter says otherwise. This charter doesn't say anything and removes what used to be there. So I think you have a bit of confusion. But if that was your intention, it's certainly not reflected in the makeup.
Well, the bylaws do trump the charter.
That's another reason to table it, because then it can be corrected and amended as appropriate.
Bylaws do trump the charter, though.
Yes, bylaws do trump charters, but the bylaw does say unless the charter otherwise calls for...
It's not called, boy.
This is silent on the matter.
And it is silent on the matter. So it doesn't call for anything to be or not to be. It is silent on the matter.
Diana, or Madam Chair, I think cleaning this up and giving Nancy, myself, and some others more time to read it, and then going ahead and voting on it, let's say, a cleaned up version on May 20 isn't going to significantly hamper the village's ability to be successful and manage the financial issues surrounding this.
I would like to call for a vote on the tabling of this matter. And I assume that we want a roll call vote. Do you want a roll call vote? So the motion before us to be voted upon, Mr. Garrison, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not the parliamentarian here by a mile. Why couldn't we vote on it and have the organization's appointment amended later to put a language in there that the liaison should be the C E O?
Nancy, I don't need for you to laugh, thank you. But the thing of it is, is the way I understand this, and I would ask my parliamentarian to correct me if I have this wrong, is that the motion for tabling supersedes the motion for discussing the actual charter itself. So what could take place here, if I may direct you, and there again, parliamentarian, please correct me if I am wrong, is that we would be taking a vote now to decide on whether or not we table. Then after that, we would be taking, if that is not successful, if that voted, if that does not pass in the affirmative, then you may go in and modify this motion and vote on it at that point in time.
Thank you.
That is correct.
So we're having a roll call vote, and we are beginning with Mr. Campania.
I guess I'm voting to table.
Got it.
I know, I am voting to table, whether it's a yes or a no.
Kirk, table or not tabling?
No.
Director Garrison?
No.
Director Loring?
Yes.
Director Alejandro?
No.
Director Sherman?
No.
Madam Chair?
No.
Those have it five to two?
We are now back to our original motion to approve and adopt the Finance Committee, Finance and Planning Committee and Charter as presented on this day of April 20, 2020. And that motion has been seconded by, I believe, Mr. Omerundo later on?
It can be amended.
Does this motion need any amendments?
Yes, I move that we amend the motion to put in language that would permit the staff liaison to be the CFO.
Would be the staff member. We do not have liaisons.
So the CFO or someone of your choosing? Or can I put the CFO?
I'll put the CFO.
I think the CFO should be in there. Well, he's got to deal with this motion.
Yes. His motion is that we amend the charter to include the appointment of the CFO to be the staff member of this committee.
The non-voting participating staff.
The non-voting participating staff member. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I second.
So now it becomes before us to take up this motion. And the motion before us is that Finance and Planning Committee Charter is amended to include the CFO as the non-voting participating member of this committee. And I would like...
Could I ask one? I can't make a motion, but I think there's some additional cleanup that could be needed.
Well, I think we need to deal with, I'd like to deal with these motions one at a time.
Can you open it up for discussion and I can share my...
Okay, and so, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like you all to consider Section 2, which is the purpose, Section 2B, which is the section that I cited earlier that references staff. And our Treasurer mentioned that, you know, obviously, I'm the staff. But I don't think that's clear enough. I don't, I think in other places, you've specifically used the C E O. And so I would just ask you all to consider that you clean up that language and it not be staff.
I would like to modify that. I move to modify that to assist and advise C E O request.
Okay, can we vote on Dick's amendment first?
I got to take care of Dick's first. Yeah, okay. Back to, got a parliamentary correction here. I need to handle the first motion that's on the, the first motion to modify, the First Amendment. And that is that this charter be amended to include the membership of the CFO as the staff non-voting participating member of this committee. And that motion was seconded. And I would now like to call for a vote on that by voice or raising your hand if you're on Zoom.
So would that...
I'm sorry, Diana, could you repeat that? Did you say a non-voting member of the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
That's in conflict with the bylaw that just put them on voting.
Not Article 12 bylaw, we are non-voting members.
No, we are all voting members.
Oh, we are voting, okay. Excuse me, excuse me.
Thank you.
Then I would like to state this as this way.
Yeah, they just changed that last week.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. To modify this charter to put the CFO as the staff member of this committee.
Perfect. Yeah, that's...
Yep. That's correct. Applause. Is that a second?
I second.
And that has been seconded, and I believe the discussion has already ensued. And I would like to call for a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye or raise your right hand.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now, I would like to have, I would like to have, can I make a motion?
You could call for a motion.
I would like to call for a motion to modify Item 2, Purpose B, that it would read assist and advise C E O on their request.
And B1, C E O request.
And B1 would be C E O requests also. Changing the word staff to C E O in Items B and B1.
Second.
I have to have a motion?
Cool. I'll make a motion to do exactly what you just said.
I'll second it exactly what you said.
I need clarification.
Okay, let me repeat this, Director Loring. We have a motion to change the word staff to C E O in both Item 2B and 2B1 under the purpose of the Financing Planning Committee Charter.
Didn't we want to have staff requests of the Finance Charter approved by the C E O?
Well, that has to be the case. That's why it's just that the C E O makes the request of the committee.
But you're just changing the word staff to C E O and not at the end by the Board of Directors? Or do you want to include C E O?
Let me just read this. It would read assist and advise C E O upon their request. Then Item 1 would read, "C E O requests to the Finance Committee are approved by the Board of Directors." Obviously, the C E O would approve the request if she was bringing, if she or he were bringing it to the board. They wouldn't bring us something to the board if they didn't approve it.
Can I see if I can help her?
Yeah, I know that presently, the staff is able to request of the Finance Committee.
Yeah, but they have to go through the C E O because our only interaction is with the C E O. We don't have any direct interaction with our staff from that standpoint.
I understand that, but this is eliminating the staff making requests now.
Right. Can I?
And the staff, the purpose behind the staff being able to make requests through the C E O was to enable them in a deeper dive possibly in golf or to furnish data or any other...
Why wouldn't they make that to their C E O? Why wouldn't they go to their C E O before they came directly to us?
Yes, Nancy, I support the change that's been made because the appropriate thing would be that the staff would come and say, "I need help with something." And I would either determine that other resources were needed or that perhaps we need the Finance Committee's assistance. That makes sense? So we've kind of taken them out of the direct loop at this point, and I support that.
Okay, but then it still has to be approved by the Board of Directors.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I'd like to call for a vote on this change. Move to have Item 2B read assist and advise C E O upon their request. And Item 2B1 read, "C E O requests to Finance Committee to be approved by the Board of Directors."
Leave another second on that.
Now, that's just I'm restating it, and now I'd like to call for a vote. And I'd like for that to be voice. Or in the case of those on Zoom, could you raise your right hand because I can't hear all that well? And those in favor vote yes by either raising the right hand or stating yes.
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 And that is a unanimous passage. I now would like to call for a vote on the original motion. Move to approve and adopt the Finance and Planning Committee and Charter as presented...
As amended.
As amended and presented on this day of April 20, 2020.
One discussion item?
Yes, sir.
When we originally came up with the first charter, we did that in probably three hours of discussion in what I'll call was a mini workshop over at Coronado Center. Remember?
Yes, I do.
A lot involved. And I think whatever we crafted, we all felt good at with at the time. I'm not comfortable at all with the fact that, why, I liked it. I voted for the two changes because I do need them to be made, the ones that we just approved.
You can signify that when you take your vote. That's not part of discussion. Giving me your opinion, you would be giving your opinion when you placed your vote, sir.
You said it was okay for me to have a discussion.
Yeah, but you're just telling me how you intend to vote.
I'm telling you that...
You're not, you don't, you need, well, okay.
We're already handling, aren't we?
Discussion is still on that?
Yes, discussion is still there.
I would point out that the original charter has the C E O involved with the annual capital budget. The new charter removes the C E O's involvement from that. And so it makes the appearance that the budget comes from the Finance Committee. And I think that is in violation of our budget policy and that's in violation of my job duties. I would just point out that you've made a few changes there that have some ramifications.
Thank you. There being no further discussion, I would like to call for a vote. I'm assuming that Director Campania would like for me to do this by roll call?
Everybody understand the motion?
Sorry?
Everybody understand the motion?
Does everyone understand the motion?
That is to approve the budget for me, the committee, with exception to the two modifications we just brought.
With the amendment.
And with the C E O's duties removed.
Removed or...
The new version removes me from that process.
No, we put that in...
No, down in duties and responsibilities.
CFO, excuse me.
Down in duties and responsibilities, there's been a significant change related to the budget process and to capital expenditure reviews and that sort of thing. So there's been a significant change in the C E O's duties.
Director Campania?
I vote to not approve.
Not approve. Director Denger?
Yes.
Director Garrison?
Yes.
Director Luring?
No.
Director Alejandro?
Yes.
Director Sherman?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The yeas have it five to two.
Just a comment before you get into this one. It's a general comment, is that okay?
Sure.
I think we're on a slippery slope if we keep approving things that are in direct conflict to the CEO's contract and her job description, which rules until any contract modifications are made.
So noted. I would like to move to table Item 6 to May.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Garrison. Those in favor, could you signify by saying aye and raising your right hand?
Aye.
Opposed? Note that the motion to table until May has been voted on in a six to one vote, and Director Denger was the one vote in the negative. Item 7, bylaws, Article 12, committees. Director Sherman?
I move to amend the bylaws, Article 7, as presented on this day.
That's Article 12, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Which item are you on?
Item 7, okay, sorry.
Item 7.
It never was my strong suit.
You couldn't do the Roman numerals?
No, no, not good. I move to amend bylaws, Article 12, as presented on this day of April 20th, 2020, per the red line attached.
I'll second.
Could you carry on with the foundation, please?
Necessary reflection of today's rescissions and creations of committees. To make all committees, board, board reporting committees mitigating filtering and censorship. To allow the board and committees to exchange information more effectively and freely. Encourage collaboration between the board and committees. Committing point of contact is corporate secretary. And red line is attached. Chapter 7, Articles 2 and 3 to follow, discussion session 2 and May 20.
I have, I would like to have a motion to modify this. The marketing committee has been tabled to May and needs to be removed from this document. Ms. Luring?
I make a motion to table this. There's too much information here to go over, and I haven't had time to do it.
This is for discussion. This is just introducing.
This is.
No, there was a motion made and seconded.
No, there was a motion made and seconded to adopt this.
Okay, right.
And now we have a motion to table it until, do you have a date? Director Luring?
No, it seems on May 20th it's getting pretty busy.
Pardon, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
I said it looks like May 20th it's getting pretty busy, but that's fine. I'll have time to read it by then.
Okay, then we have a motion before us. My motion dies for lack of second for the, to take, remove the marketing portion. So the motion before us is that we would table this motion until our May 20th business meeting. But it will become up for discussion at May 6th, in the first discussion meeting in Wednesday, May 6th.
I second. That's where we are, right? She made a motion, I'm second.
Yeah, and I just was repeating that.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Chair, that's you. I would again point out to the board that this particular action has consequences related to staff duties, and I would support you all evaluating that further.
And would you be willing to provide us the detail on that as we get ready for May 6th?
I'd be happy to do that in writing.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a vote on the motion to table. Do you need a roll call on that, Director Campania?
Is there any more discussion?
No, I call for a vote.
Yeah, I'd like a roll call.
Roll call?
So yes, yes is the thing.
Roll call vote to table this?
You want a roll call vote to table?
Yes.
Director Campania?
I vote to table.
Director Denger?
I vote to table.
Director Garrison?
Table.
Luring?
To table.
Director Alejandro?
Table.
Director Sherman?
Table.
Madam Chair?
Table. Before we go on, could I point out that included in your packet, Article 12 now requires voting by the board for committee assignments. And that hasn't been dealt with by this body before. So I attempted with the help of the secretary to put together a matrix to try to use for that voting. And I would like for you all to give thought to, you know, the best practices in picking these board members of the committee. And we will be talking about this in May. I just want to draw your attention to that.
So are you saying you're putting this off?
Yes, because it goes with it. But I just want you to give your attention to that and your thoughts on how we're going to vote for these board member, board members of the committees. Yes, Director Luring?
I still have committee members' meetings that I need to attend. Am I to attend them or am I not necessarily on that committee?
No, you are to attend, you.
You'll be calling tomorrow night.
You are to attend them, and I would ask that Directors Luring and Campania, help Campania, I'm so, my mouth is so dry I can hardly talk. I have water here. But anyway, I'm so sorry. I would ask that you would assist me in determining where we have no board members right now for committees so that we can get the new people to help cover those committee meetings in the interim time until we get everybody slotted.
Sure.
And that's the matrix I didn't receive?
Yes.
Right, okay.
The answer to your question is I will be happy to help.
Nancy, would you be happy to help me so that we can make sure that the committee, and some of these committee meetings are, because of the COVID protocol, they're Zoom, and there's just a lot of moving parts in this. And I would also like to ask our CEO if she could provide us with a consolidated list of dates and times of the committee meetings so that we can make sure that they're all covered. And keep in mind that we may have to do an email vote to just give somebody a temporary committee assignment on some of those committees that doesn't have a board assignment right now? Just so they can participate in the discussion of those meetings? Ms. Luring?
I'm happy to help. I do know that, I believe all of the staff committee members have access to Zoom, and that's the way my meetings are being conducted. And I'm sure that that's the way most of them are being conducted.
Yeah, but we have to get that Zoom information out to all of the board members so that if they choose to want to participate, who's ever going to participate in those committee meetings that don't have a board member assigned, we can get that assigned to them. You follow me there?
They would need to be assigned before the staff person would be able to contact them to invite them to the meeting.
Yeah, well, I would like to work with the CEO in getting this as smooth as possible for us, for our board.
Well, I will make a point, Nancy, if you agree. Between now and 5 o'clock tomorrow, we'll come up with a vacant committee list. So to reference to your point, and then you can figure out who you think would be the appropriate person to put on. For example, the golf committee or the government affairs committee, because I know those two now have nobody representing it from the board. But there's others.
Right. Right.
Is that okay with you, Nancy, that we do this by 5 tomorrow? We'll get an email out to you.
And I'll just give some instruction here to staff and other many staff members watching this today. So if you have a committee, please give your invitation, include all of the elected board members on each of your invitations until we get with you on who specifically will be on that committee. Will that, will that?
That would be a big help, yeah.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Great, and board members could know that they can always attend any committee meeting.
Right, but during, during the COVID thing, they're going to have to retain Zoom, and they have to know how to connect to it and that kind of thing. So with that information, we should be able to get through this process right now. Director?
I thought you made a comment that, that we hadn't voted on the marketing committee, but I thought we did.
No, we did not. I tabled that till May.
Oh, okay, didn't we vote on table yet?
Yeah.
We voted on table, okay, that's all I had.
Yeah. Madam Chair, just a point of order. Does, do all the directors understand what passed in your?
You've tabled the CNP Advisory Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, then should it still be listed on here because they may very well meet before that time? Because we can't tell them, they don't exist.
Right, right, good point, good point. I would ask our secretary to prepare us a new matrix based on what occurred for voting to have available in May.
Okay, I do want to ask that someone in this room, because I was not there, explain your new process of voting on the, the board seated member of the committees as opposed to how it used to be when the chairperson appointed us?
We don't have a process, that's, that's the issue that we have to take out on a.
Article 12 currently states that the board votes on it, but I mean, the process could be as simple as a ballot vote or a non-ballot vote. Where Dick wants to be on XYZ committee, we all say we support Dick for that committee.
Same like, it's the same as the officer elections, really. I mean, that's, that's what it is, is somebody.
Well, I was hoping that we could, you know.
Yeah, but I mean.
Do it, so it's not I nominating, da-da-da-da-da, we, you know. So that's just something we have to all work on.
But I don't think we need to go through some secret ballot on the.
No, it wasn't going to be a secret ballot, that was a worksheet.
Yeah.
That was just, that was merely, that, that matrix that was in this packet today was a worksheet for voting.
It was going to be tallied, tallied and recorded.
Okay.
To Marcy's, to Marcy's question, I believe that some of that has been explained to the committees because it was a pretty radical change to become a committee member and to take off your board director hat and put on your committee member hat.
That's not what we're, that's not.
She was talking about, she was wondering how we let them know about the fact that it will be a ballot or however you choose to do it by the board as opposed to the chairman.
Yeah, okay.
That was explained, I think.
Okay, moving on. We're now going into the blue section of your packet, and we have Item number nine. Bylaws, Article 9, the board. This, I too would like to make a motion to table to May.
Good.
Madam Chair, point of order, I think in your original motion to adopt it, you already said that. But you can go through it again.
I did say that.
You tabled 6, 9, and 15.
Okay.
But you can take another vote if you want.
I've already tabled this, this is tabled.
That was quick.
Number nine, Item 9 was tabled.
And we, we voted on that table, didn't we, Madam Secretary?
No, when I called the meeting to order, I removed it at that time. So it really wasn't part of this meeting to begin with. Thank you for the help.
She was removing items from her own agenda.
I was removing items from my own agenda when I was bringing it forward. Now we're at Item 10, bylaws, Article 11, officer job descriptions, and these are board officers.
I move to approve and adopt the restatement of Sections 2 through 5 of as presented on this day of April 20th, which would be restatement of Article 11, Sections 2 through 5, officer descriptions.
I'll second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Or, no, excuse me. Mr. Sherman, would you like to give us the background or the foundation of this?
Absolutely. As a working board, we are taking much more seriously what we have to be done to assure that Hot Springs Village not only survives but thrives. That said, we have restated our officer's job description based on the many corrections we see needed in governing and staff oversight. These job descriptions are also run in the policy guide but do not agree on many items. Therefore, an additional scrub will have to take place for the bylaws and policies to agree, which is likewise the issue with the CEO's job description. Not only does Section 6 in this bylaws not mirror the policy guide, but the job description referred in her contract, the CEO contract, does not as well. More work needed here, but suffice to say, our bylaws now reflect the reality of responsibility going forward to the four officer positions, i.e. the chair, the vice chair, the corporate slash board secretary, and the corporate slash board treasurer. See the attached restatement.
Madam Chair?
Before you begin, I think I might be able to solve what you're going to say there.
I thought so.
I hope so. And that the foundation here, the CEO's contract clearly states that this, her contract is entered into by us based upon the bylaws, policies, job description, et cetera, that were enforced, in place at the time of the contract was signed. So there may not be any agreeance between her job description and her contract because it's been changed since the contract was entered into, and that's okay. So.
Actually, that's kind of not exactly my point. There's a statement in here that directs the CFO to have an obligation to provide all information requested by the treasurer. So this directs actually my staff member to be in subordination to our treasurer. That would impact my duties.
Could we not do that through you? Would not be.
That's not what it says in this bylaw.
Could have been.
I don't support this. There are several places in here, and of course, I've just had, I just had an hour before this meeting to review the impact to my staff. And there are a handful of places in here that I think would create some confusion. I will again, I don't know why we would have a reference to the secretary being a board liaison to Cooper Communities. I think that's totally inappropriate to be in our bylaws. I don't think that our corporate secretary should be a liaison to our law firm. Actually, the way it exists today, our chair does that. I think there's several complicating factors in this set of bylaws that you may not have thought fully through. And another area, the secretary uphold all policies and procedures as an associate administrator of and having access to all software, including company-wide email accounts. I think it'd be totally inappropriate for a corporate officer to have access to the board's email accounts, and for that matter, anyone else. I think this is complete overreach by a non-board, non-employee officer of the company that puts this association in significant jeopardy. It would be highly unusual for that to be the case, and it certainly impacts staff member duties.
I'd like to make two comments here. One, if I remember conversations that took place with.
Corby, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. If I remember conversations that took place with CCI in the past, he's, John Cooper specifically said the person he wants to deal with is the chair because he knows the chair is the one, and/or the board is the one that can make decisions that could or couldn't impact him or. that could or couldn't impact him or could help us or hurt us. So I would have to agree, even though that Marcy may have an excellent relationship with John Cooper and other parties up there, for all I know, it's probably inappropriate for the secretary to be the guiding light to our relationship with John Cooper. On another, on this similar issue to the second point here, we gotta be careful here that we don't write a job description. If you want to change the scrubs, you have to really well to do it, but let's not create problems within our own organization by changing these. Let's make them more thoughtful. And I think with help from Leslie, we can actually get that done such that changes can be made that not only meet the intent of this document, but also serve the association in the best way. So I make a motion to table this again until the May fifth, twentieth, whatever, the next discussion.
I second it.
Yes!
See, this is why I don't get to have a-
Is your iPad there? We gotta check our insurance.
Yeah, we may not have any.
Good thing it's just water. We have a motion to table this item until May sixth, and it has been seconded. I would like to call for a vote on this. Please vote-
Any discussion?
Yes, we can have discussion.
Is this, does this, this, tabling this is not gonna mess up anything else down the way or anything like that necessarily, or what?
Other than what you spill the water on.
Yeah, I personally have no problem with table, you know, to get it cleaned up if it needs to be cleaned up. And, you know, I want it properly done, obviously, so.
It's obvious that I didn't dot all my i's and cross all my t's on this, and-
Understandable. Just my comment.
I, I-
Is it still open?
It's still open for discussion. Yes, Kirk.
Yeah, I don't know. Are any of these changes, I don't see the red line, and I'm just wondering, are they actually rescinding any of the previous bylaws that were changed? Are they reverting them back? Are these new changes that you're coming up with?
Point of order, it's a total restatement of those sections.
Yeah. Nancy.
As it says in the motion, Kirk.
I, I agree totally that the secretary and the CFO of the association are not-
We're not discussing it. We're discussing whether or not to table, Nancy.
I know, but I'm discussing why I would like to table it and have it report. Because they are not employees of the board, they are employees of Leslie. Leslie's in charge of those people. They might as well have continued as corporate treasurer and doing the duties of corporate secretary.
Wait a minute, Nancy, the CFO is an employee, Leslie, but the treasurer and secretary aren't.
I think Nancy is talking about Ella and just because of some-
And Liz.
Because of some, when she said that secretary, yes, Liz obviously makes sense. Ella is my executive assistant, so obviously this relieves her of quite a bit of things as, I mean, as happened when the secretary was appointed. But all of those things, yeah, so that's who you're talking about. Any of the things that Ella assisted me with.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear because I'm specifically talking about Ella and Liz, the human corporate secretary, and she's your administrative assistant.
I think you can call for a vote.
I think I can call for a vote to table this. All in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Passing, it passed unanimously. Now I have to go to the floor to pick up my wet paper.
What's that unanimous?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now to item eleven.
Which we need to-
Yep, you probably should table that with the CMP discussion.
Why?
I don't think that we need to table this with the CMP discussion.
You, you actually referenced that in here. You call it the CMP zoning code, but it's actually a protective covenant. It is a separate document.
It was originally written as a zoning code.
It's called the protective covenants. It's not a CMP zoning code. So you would be rescinding your-
You would be rescinding your protective covenants by this motion.
And you know the thing, I don't have any idea.
That's what the intent is.
That's not what it says.
Well, that's the intent.
Can I, can I make a motion?
No.
No, we don't, we're trying to figure it out.
We're trying to figure out where we are here, Kirk.
I haven't, I'm gonna be candid with you. I haven't read our zoning code in the CMP with any great detail, and it'd be hard to figure out what I'm really, would be talking to here. I mean, I might be saying that we could build a gas station next to my house if we rescind, rescind the zoning codes. I don't have any idea.
You would have no protective covenants. That's what that is.
The secretary, the secretary, the secretary would like to speak?
I just want to give you an explanation of this. When the, when the, in April eighteenth of eighteen, when the CMP and its understandings was adopted, it was adopted also with an amended-
Protective covenants.
Protective covenants.
It was not called a protect, I have a, I actually have a copy of it. It was Matt explained it as zoning codes, and he explained how they were to be used. They then, two weeks later, were given a title of protective covenants. The table of contents changed. So this is an explanation of both of those. Whichever time element you want to recognize it as, this is all the same document.
This needs to be, this, this needs to be tabled until May because this is based, the foundation of this is based on the rescission of the CMP and its original eight understandings, and therefore, we table that, we must table this.
That is true. Correct. I would agree with that.
Wasn't voted in at the same time as the CMP, was it?
Yes.
There have been, there, there was one vote, and that's what you're trying to talk about, the, the original vote that voted in the protective covenants and the CMP. That's that, that's that April vote. There have since that time been amendments to the protective covenants. If your intention is to remove, I mean, you could vote on this if your intention is to remove that very first document because there's now a third document, the one we just passed, the one the board just passed, last meeting, the amendments.
Yeah, yes.
So, I mean, if-
April.
In effect, this motion would have, if your intention was to, to remove that April twenty eighteen document, it has no effect. It no longer exists because it's been, it has been amended since that time up to and including last month. And if you're, but however, if your intention was to rescind the protective covenants, I don't think that, that clearly states this, and I would remind everyone that you are in a lawsuit. The association is in a lawsuit related to the protective covenants, and you may want to consider how that action impacts that suit.
I think Leslie's point here is a little valid.
I have a motion to table this item. Do I have a second for my motion?
I'll second.
May I call for a vote to table this action to May? Those who are in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is passing unanimously. Item twelve, Vice Chair.
I move to cancel any planned, partially planned, or potentially planned board retreat for this board at this time. Approval of action this day on April twentieth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Background, as cohesive working board and team, we have much to do to stabilize Hot Springs Village financial situation, as well as better care for our facilities and amenities, and the list goes on. We have little time and no funds to waste on expensive elementary tutorials at this juncture.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, Director Lurie.
There is, there is no plan. So there really is nothing to cancel. There is absolutely no plan.
So there is nothing calendared and there is no plan?
No.
CEO, CEO Nally would like to speak?
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, because I know Lloyd has not been through a retreat, that retreat is a strategic planning session. So it's, it's much different than orientation. It sounds like maybe you're considering using your two meetings as your strategic planning sessions. That's their whole purpose, is to, is to give guidance to the retreat's whole purpose. But there's not one planned, so.
Okay.
Noted. And yes, working sessions would-
Replace it.
Replace those.
You want to remove this? Do you want to remove your motion?
I remove my motion, thank you.
Articles, item thirteen.
I move to remove Leslie Nally from the, as the agent of HSVPOA Articles of Incorporation and name Marcy Mermel, corporate secretary, as agent of record. Approval of action this day of April twentieth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Foundation and background, it is appropriate for corporate secretary to be the agent of record on our Articles of Incorporation. As of her office, Mermel should be the signatory as well.
What would she be signing?
Any amendments?
Any amendments to what?
To their Articles of Incorporation.
And, and you speak to the fact that it's appropriate.
It's common practice.
Huh?
It's common practice.
Is that right? It's common practice?
I could speak to that.
Yes, Ms. Nally. So actually, it wasn't necessary to remove the CEO from that. All officers are listed as agents of the corporation in the Secretary of State's office. So you, and as the corporate secretary, you should be on that, on that listing and would be, just as our new treasurer would be and as every board member would be. That's a change that's made. So I, if you're referring to notices to the corporation-
You're, you're cited as the agent.
That's because I receive the notices to the corporation. I am in the office the entire time. And so they, they list someone for fifty years that someone has been this board's employee, who is in the office day in and day out and would receive notice timely to any, any lawsuits. So I think you're confusing a couple of things here that, that potentially have implications, but certainly welcome, but certainly you should, the secretary should be noted as an officer.
So are you saying we really don't have a need for this?
I, I don't think you do, and I don't think that you want to have somebody who's not in the office day in and day out to be the, the person that you requested to receive notices. That would be if you were, oh, sorry, Nancy.
No, I'm sorry, Leslie. I, I think you should just rescind this motion. I don't believe it's necessary.
And are you saying, Leslie, that she is, Marcy's automatically the, on the Articles of Corporations by, byproduct of being the secretary?
Each August, we update the Secretary of State's website with all new board members and all new officers, and it would be updated at that time.
That's done without action.
Yeah, that would do it.
I'm removing by motion.
Okay, we're now going into the green packet.
Actually, make it time.
We have item fourteen, the policy guide. Vice Chair Sherman.
Did we not table?
Oh, wait a minute. I had fourteen. I think fourteen was in my original table. No, no.
No, sixteen.
It's-
Fifteen was.
Fifteen. No, we didn't.
But, but there's no, there's no document. I don't, I didn't receive-
Yeah, no, we were not.
I didn't receive a document on that.
You don't have one that says number fourteen?
I don't, I don't have what-
No, 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 no. This, this is a motion to add a chapter nine to our current policies.
Right, but it doesn't say what chapter nine is.
For financial-
Financial accounting, strategic planning.
But it doesn't have the policy there.
Why would you make a motion to add a document that doesn't exist? Why wouldn't you want the document?
We want to add the chapter at this point in time, so that we can create this document.
Well, it would seem to me, given our past practices, when we modify these, we create what's in the chapter. As example was the voting thing, and then we make a motion to add that to the policies, not the other way around.
The chapters are the policies. If, if you look at-
Yes, I have it right here.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so as, may I explain or do you want?
Go ahead.
It's the same as when the policy manual did not have a chapter for the board. Chapter eight is new in the last three years.
Okay.
Right now, the financial information in the policies is spread throughout, and we would like to create a new chapter for policies such like, the budget right now is an administrative, chapter one, article two, where it could be chapter nine, article one.
I'm wanting to direct my secretary to take these financial and accounting and strategic planning policies that are mixed in amongst various policies that already exist, and I'm wanting to give her the authority from this board to do that and put that together for us for our review down the road.
Well, just a point, this is my opinion here. What you're suggesting you think you ought to do makes a lot of sense, okay? So it's hard to discount that. It seems to me you don't need a motion. All you need to do is ask the secretary, can you please put all this together and bring it to-
Well, I, I- It's a governing document, and we do have to-
I just wanted to make sure that I had approval from the board to direct the secretary to put this together for us. That was my intent of writing this.
But it is a governing document.
So we'll be creating a new governing document.
Yes, but her putting together what ought to be in that governing document doesn't mean it's been voted on, like we have to vote on all other governing documents.
Correct. We have to create the vessel, is what we're trying to do.
From my perspective, if that's what you want to do, have at it.
Well, I, I think the, the, the more appropriate motion might be to direct the secretary
to compile all of the policies that related to finance. Don't mean this yet, because,
okay?
You know, I mean, if that's what you're really after, because this doesn't do anything except get you a tab on the policies, but there's no, there's no other, you know, direction to say-
Right. I just didn't feel like I, as the chair, had the authority to direct her to do that on my own.
You can make assignments. Yeah, you can make assignments.
Yeah, I, I don't think that unless she plans to edit and redline, then, then, and that I don't agree with, because she's done away with the governance committee. It's now the board's responsibility as a whole to do that.
Collecting.
You don't need a chapter nine until we get all of those documents compiled that are, and then we go to work on them.
But if you want, if you want to modify your motion to say, I'm gonna make it. I'll make a motion to modify this motion.
You want to amend it?
And that will be to, for the board to direct the secretary to compile all the different parts of our bylaws and policies such that we can then make the appropriate change to the policies to reflect that. I make that motion.
Just, just take out the word bylaw because it's not a bylaw, it's just policies.
We haven't made a motion.
I'll second that.
That's true.
You're discussing something we haven't.
Yeah, we haven't.
I thought someone read this.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Now, there was a question as to whether or not I got tabled.
Oh, that's right.
That's all we did so far. They were now the...
Okay, what's the new motion then?
There was no motion.
There was no motion. But, you know, I'm seeking approval from you guys to make sure that I have the authority to direct her to go through our policies, and all things relating to finance and planning and accounting get pulled together, and we get them in one particular chapter in our policy guide.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, let's just take a vote on that.
And thanking Kirk.
I think it's a great idea, too, as long as she's not doing editing and redlining on it. That's the responsibility now.
Collecting.
Collecting.
Collecting. She'll be doing collections.
You could assign that authority to her, or the board can.
Ask for a motion.
Okay.
Why don't you just, why don't you gain consensus, Diana?
Pardon?
Ask for a motion.
Why don't you gain consensus as opposed to taking a vote?
All right.
Can you withdraw your motion?
There was none.
There was never one made. We never had a motion or a term of motion. We never read it. We've just been going off on discussion here, and, and...
Well, then they make the motions. First, I make a motion to remove this from the agenda. Then I make a second motion.
Well, wait a minute. Let's second that motion. Do we have a second to remove this from the agenda?
Second, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Now I'll make a motion that we authorize our secretary to go through our policy documents and put them all into one concise place and bring it forward to the board to review. And if, in fact, that review is accepted by the board, add another chapter to the 8, I guess it is, 9 or 10.
To go through our policy guide and consolidate all policies relating to finance, accounting, and strategic planning into one section of the policy guide.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion on this? I'd like to call for a vote. Those in favor signify, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Ananimously passed. Okay, the next one is moved to May. Item 16, the budget policy. Item 16.
I know, what happened to, you put enterprise goals out, didn't you?
I put, I, those are May.
Okay.
15 was removed, right?
15 is, is, my call to order to the meeting was moved to May.
Thank you. I missed that one.
16 was moved off at the beginning.
Yeah, 16.
If you remove 16, the next two don't make sense.
16, 17, and 18 all follow the same thing you removed the other ones for.
Right. Right. Same thing.
So what are we doing?
Remove, removing 16, 17, and 18.
Table and all that.
Table, or ta, yeah, tabling 16.
Well, 16 was already moved, correct?
No, no.
No, 15 was.
16 was not moved. No, no, no. 16 was not moved. 15 was moved, not 16.
Right.
Madam Chairman, if you remove those, then you're also... Yeah, we, we...
Tabling 19.
We're going to, we're going to go ahead and go forward with this, because this is a replacement in, and we've got, we're going to reset. We want to do 16, 17 is replaced with 17, is replaced with 18, and 19.
And I would again state on record that all of those impact staff, and there could be implications, just as there were to the finance, to the other areas of financial matters. I think you probably need additional time to study those implications.
I make a motion that, because you have to do it one at a time here. Budget policy, motion number 16, be tabled till May. So further review can be done by not only board members, but also by our CEO to determine what the exact ramifications are, so we're all understanding that before we go ahead and approve.
Tori, I didn't hear that. I think I probably will second it, but I didn't hear it.
Well, that's the best way to get a second, is not understand, not hear what I said. So that worked out perfectly.
Just mumble, yeah.
I said that, I make a motion that we table this policy, budget policy, item 16, until we've had a chance to review the two following documents, and Leslie's had a chance to just review it herself and come back to us with what the unintended consequences may be to our staff.
Second.
Yeah, you probably need to go 16 through the rest of it, potentially.
So that means I can't go up straight?
Actually, what I, I would like to, we have a motion before us to table this. We're putting, we, this is pretty important things here, with the budget policy and with the coronavirus situation going on and that sort of thing, and looking at the budget. I would like to modify your motion to table, Mr. Campagna, that we table this to a special meeting to be held next Monday at 9:00 a.m. in this room. To, to look at items 16, 17, 18, and 19, and items 20 and 21, I believe need to be tabled to our next executive session.
Wait, 20, yes, 21, no.
Well, you already tabled 20 and 21.
20 and 21 have already been tabled to the next executive session.
I wrote those when you said it.
In relation to item 19, will we have that restated budget to look at?
No, that is to, for them to start working on it.
Well, I, I think to, to your motion, which, discussion, I think before we underst, we need to understand exactly what, and probably in an executive session, Leslie is putting right now in place, beyond what we heard about at the last board meeting in our annual report, to, to address the financial situation that this virus is affecting the village. And it's possible some of the things that she's discussing should be confidential. So I would like to see it in an executive session, not just an open meeting to discuss that.
I'm not comfortable. We've never discussed the budget in closed meetings. All of our budget discussions all last year were always open meetings. We did not have closed meetings on budget discussions.
We did have one closed meeting.
Well, that was towards the very end. That wasn't when the budget was being presented or anything like that.
Could, maybe this would help. Could you maybe instead call an executive session for the purpose of explaining to the CEO what it is that you would like, a restated budget? What, what the, what the direction is? I still don't understand that. And as, as you all know, we did, and I'll just announce here, we did receive our loan for PPP funds. So there's new information. I think that I need to understand what it is you want to see in, in that direction. And there may be discussions in there based on what you wrote down here that, that we need to probably do that privately.
The last thing we don't want to, I would think we'd want to do is to have a discussion that could impact the CARES money we expect to receive.
Absolutely.
In other words, we could just be digging ourselves potentially another $3 million hole, or not coming out of a $3 million hole, whichever way it is. And that's why I think that discussion, to Leslie's point, should probably not be a community-wide discussion. It should be an internal discussion of the board and Leslie and our Treasurer and our Secretary.
And obviously, obviously, no work would be done, because to your point, this would only be direction to bring forth information that would be discussed publicly.
Right.
Does our Treasurer have anyone, anything that he would like to say at this juncture?
Well, I think we can put it off. I can put together an explanation of what we need and what we should be looking at, and put that in writing to the board, and, and we'll, we'll see what information we can get together. Now, I, I think the, the point here is that somebody take an independent look at where we stand. Where are we? What, what are the ramifications? What, what are the, the expected future ramifications of all this? I think in the last board meeting, there was a, a comment that we had a $1.9 million issue, and that's year-to-date. So what is the issue long-term? And, you know, is it going to turn around quickly? If it turns around quickly, where does that put us? If it takes a long time, where does that put us? I mean, some people are projecting it's going to take two years to, to fully recover back to prior levels. So we just need to get started to, to take a look at where we are and where we, and what we need to do.
Can I just clarify one?
Actually, it, it wasn't a year-to-date. There's been a projection that the CFO made, that CFO and I made. So I think maybe some understanding, perhaps the Treasurer and I should, he should get up to speed on some of the information that we have. And certainly, I'm sure with, with your business acumen, there would be other things that I may not, we may not have considered. But I'd at least like the opportunity to say, this is what we've already evaluated and where we are, and bring him up to speed on that.
Madam Chair, she had mentioned something a minute ago that I think that might want to be told to the community about the PPP.
Yeah, sure.
I think we know what happened today, but we don't...
And you all took a vote.
Did you, did you not announce that? Would that not be publicly announced, or can we...
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because you all took a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're right. Yeah, you're...
Well, I thought you just did that. You were live, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, I did.
But you want to just, you want to just, let's give that the attention that it really, really deserves. And I'm going to ask our CEO, Leslie Nally, to explain to us what has transpired today in our applications for assistance from the federal government in regards to the pandemic, financial assistance.
Yep. So as you all know, some, some weeks back, CFO Mathis applied for money. I mentioned that in my annual, Kirk, we can hear you, I'll have to mute you. We, I mentioned that in my annual meeting comments, that we had made application. We'd applied for $3 million of money under the Payroll Protection Program grant. We received word today that we needed to sign the documents that we had been authorized for that. We don't know at this time whether or not it is a forgivable loan. The loan that we do have is at a 1% rate. Obviously, if it's forgivable, we don't, you know, we won't pay some of that back. We don't have those full details yet, but we did receive the full amount of what we requested. So that's great news. And subsequently, the board, by email, they saw the loan documents and took an email vote and approved us to go ahead and make that, finalize that application, sign those loan documents. Does that, does that cover?
Yeah, and that is wonderful news, because if you've been following this in the media, there wasn't enough money to go around by any means. And as a nonprofit, I believe we were very fortunate to get in on this. I would like to get back to this matter of these four items, items 16, 17, 18...
And 19.
And 19, excuse me, there are those wet papers again.
And 20.
Well, I was moving 20 and 21 to the next executive session already. So they're already in the next executive session. To an executive session, and I don't know if you all have your calendars available that you could look to see to your availability on this, but I propose tabling this to Monday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m.
I'd rather do it earlier if we could.
You want earlier or later?
No, no, I, I'd ra, well, I'd rather do...
We want you to be able to play golf, Tori.
Well, I've only missed about half my normal golf rounds so far.
Oh, I understand, and it's pretty nice out there today, but...
Dan feels the same way about golf rounds, or at least he used to. So, I mean, personally, I'd rather do it at 8:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon.
Well, let me ask our Treasurer how that conflicts with his schedule, because this is very important stuff from the Treasurer's standpoint.
I have 9:00, but I'll move it.
You can move your 9:00?
So 8:00 would be fine.
Then, then let's go for 8:00. Leslie, could you set that up for this room, so we have the COVID spacing? Nancy and Kirk?
Is this a special meeting or an executive session?
It's an executive session.
8:00, this room, what?
8:00, this room, Monday morning, April 27th. Nancy and Kirk, will you please inform me whether or not you are going to attend physically or by Zoom? I don't need to know that right now, but I do need to know that, because if everybody's going to be here physically, we don't have to set up the Zoom. So I'll ask for that.
Yeah, I'll do Zoom.
You'll do Zoom, and you, Nancy?
I, I don't know yet.
You don't know yet, that's fine.
I need to tell this a couple of weeks away.
I don't know yet either.
Will it just be exclusive of these items, or is there no surprise?
Well, it would be the exclusive of these items and anything else affecting COVID-19.
Any new information.
Any new information regarding COVID-19.
And then, that's like 8:00 on April 27th at this point?
That'd be 8:00 a.m. April 27th. Does that conflict for you, Ms. Nally?
No, the only thing I have, I just like some direction. What, what should we all bring to this meeting?
Your brain?
Sorry.
Are you asking them to study these documents?
I'm asking you to study these documents, yes. And I'm asking you, as you see things when you're studying that you have an issue with, if you could get that by email out to the board, assuming our new board members get their POA email as quickly as possible, because I don't want this kind of stuff out on some other server.
Okay, do you, you need us to work together to bring something?
Yeah, yeah. If the two of you, if the two of you can set up a time to get together, that'd be great. I mean, the more we, more information we have, the better off we'll be.
I think we could, I think Dan, you and I could probably help this conversation a lot with, with that.
Yeah, I'll give you a list of the stuff that I'm, I'm looking for.
Okay, and I'll give you a list of stuff I'm thinking about as well. So I think maybe it's a joint conversation about what, what we bring forth to the board? Sound good? Okay.
Okay, at this time, I would like to thank each and every officer, board member, our POA staff that, that are behind the scenes, doing things on our behalf, so that we can meet. And I would like to note to the community, I'm not whining, but it has been a 10-hour workday thus far. But anyway, this board is working for you. We are, we, we are recognizing our call to work on your behalf and your benefit, and we will continue to do so. Everybody stay safe, and I now adjourn this meeting.
Do we have a motion?
In a special meeting, you don't need a motion, because you...
I'm kidding, because Cindy did that, remember when...
We were still on my feet. I've got to remind you, we're still on my feet. We're still, yeah, we're still...
Don't say anything about it.
I don't want to go to work.
Don't, don't cry about your handicap, because we know. You guys, whatever you need to get those, I mean, I understand there's some issues with the iPads and stuff, but we hope to get those.
I never really did get ready.